Good afternoon, I'd like to call the Planning Commission Meeting of September 13th, 2022 to order. If you will all please stand with me for a moment of silent prayer and the pledge. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If there is anyone from the public that wishes to speak on a matter that is not on tonight's agenda, please fill out a speaker card and we can hear from you now prior to opening the rest of the meeting. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on any matter? All right. Moving on. Item number one is Community Development Ordinance Number 2960 Amendment to the City's Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan to add recreation improvement and incorporate into the City of Apopka's comprehensive plan capital improvements element.
Good evening. Chris Richter, the Recreation Supervisor here with the City of Apopka, filling in for Radley. He had something pop up on his personal life, so filling in for him. Our request to you all is to recommend approval of Ordinance Number 2960, amending the City of Apopka's Five-Year Capital Improvements Plan and incorporating it into the City of Apopka Comprehensive Plan Capital Improvement Element and hold it over for a second reading and adoption at the future city council meetings. The city desires to add new recreational facilities at the city-owned Northwest Recreation Complex to accommodate the addition of a new ADA playground on the south side of the park. To help fund these recreation improvements, the city proposes to apply for available matching grant funds sponsored by the Florida Department of Environmental Protections Florida Recreation Development Assistant Program, also known as FORDAP. Eligibility requirements for this grant program require that the proposed recreation improvement must be recognized within the city's capital improvement program established in the comprehensive plan. Further, the city must proceed expeditiously at this time to meet grant application deadlines. Hence, the proposed update to the five-year CIP of the comprehensive plan at this time as it only addresses the new recreation improvements at the Northwest Recreation Complex. After fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget has been approved by city council. Staff will conduct an annual update to the five-year CIP to address necessary levels of service to maintain and repair failing facilities and provide additional infrastructure facilities and roads to meet the demands generated by new growth and development. Typically, the five-year CIP within the comprehensive plan addresses the infrastructure needs related to transportation, water, sewer, reclaimed water, stormwater management, and recreation. In Exhibit A, this report includes the updated CIP to be incorporated as Appendix 7-1 of the capital improvements element. The proposed CIP changes, which are additions, are included in the general fund and the FDIP grant fund sections of the CIP. Legislative changes in 2011 to Chapter 163 Florida statutes allow local governments to update their five-year CIP by ordinance and is not considered a comprehensive plan policy amendment. Therefore, incorporation of the updated CIP into the capital improvements element does not require transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for state agency review. Staff recommended motion is to find the proposed amendment of the Apopka Five-Year Capital Improvements Plan consistent with the Apopka Comprehensive Plan and recommend approval of the Five-Year Capital Improvements Plan Amendment and the incorporation into the capital improvements element of the comprehensive plan. Any questions?
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, I didn't see a total dollar amount for the first year.
So it is a $200,000 matching grant.
Say again?
It's a $200,000 grant matching, grant matching. So anything up to $200,000 will be matching grant. In the exhibit here, if you look under the first page, I believe they have it, we have it as roughly $367,000 on the exhibit. But those numbers will obviously come together as the plan gets farther, as we pick, you know, the different parts of the playground and what exactly is needed.
And there's no plans for a swimming pool out there?
I've not been involved in those, but I've heard that that is part of the plan down the road.
That would be great.
But that would be definitely something that I can follow up with Radley on.
I think we need one for the, for the high schools to have access to, so they can play sports there and people can have a...
Yeah, I know currently the Apopka High School is using the pool out at Camp Leewa for some of their practices.
Yeah, but is it a substandard pool? I mean, I haven't seen that pool in 60, I haven't seen that pool in 50 years.
It's a, it's a junior Olympic-sized pool. So obviously, they felt it was, the high schools out there, they feel it fits their needs.
We need something as nice as Lake Highland High School has.
Okay.
They have a nice facility. We need something as nice or nicer, I think.
Yeah, we can definitely, definitely add that and I can pass that along to Radley for long-term planning.
Thank you.
But this is the project that's going to have the ADA?
Correct, yeah, this is the ADA.
I'm really excited about that.
Yeah, we're excited. And we are, just so everyone's aware, we are going to have a second public meeting. We did have one in August that wasn't attended really at all. So our goal is to have another one to hopefully get more input, to figure out, you know, the exact needs of people that will be using that facility more.
It's fantastic. Good luck.
Any further questions? Bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I find the proposed amendment to the Apopka Five-Year Capital Improvements Plan consistent with the Apopka Comprehensive Plan and recommend approval of the Five-Year Capital Improvements Plan Amendment and the incorporation into the capital improvements element of the comprehensive plan.
Have a motion by Commissioner Washington. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item two, Amendment to Ordinance Number 2449 Mullenax Ford Plan Development and Master Plan, Mullenax Ford of Central Florida, Inc., owner, applicant is Florida Engineering Group, care of Greg Crawford, P.E., north of State Road 436 and east of Roger Williams Road.
Good evening, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approval of the amendment to Ordinance Number 2449 Mullenax Ford PD Master Plan. The ordinance number is actually 2968. The property is located north of State Road 436 and east of Roger Williams Road. Currently has a future land use designation of commercial, which permits up to .25 floor The original PUD master plan was adopted on January 2nd, 2003 through Ordinance Number 1552, allowing automotive, sales, and associated uses. On September 16th, 2015, city council adopted Ordinance Number 2449, establishing the Mullenax Ford Plan Development and its accompanying master plan that includes the phasing for the previously approved, for the previously approved uses on 21.5 acres. Subject property is located north of State Road 436 and Roger Williams Road, and the applicant is requesting to amend PD Ordinance Number 2449 to add the following on the existing PD boundary. 2,000, approximately 2,000 square feet of office, 1,600 square feet for car wash use, 106,000 square feet of storage, parts, service, and parking, 47 new customer parking spaces, and 90 new vehicle storage spaces. Shown are the proposed architectural elevations. The DRC recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Mullenax PD Master Plan Amendment, Ordinance Number 2968, based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you. I have one question. So the, the boundaries of the PD aren't going to change, it's just basically the square footage and the usage is the only change we're doing here?
Yes, sir.
So the boundary's not, hasn't changed at all?
Absolutely right.
Great, thank you. Anyone have any other questions of staff?
Yeah, what's the total public parking spaces?
I know the addition was 47 new customer parking spaces based on their additional square footage. Let me ask the applicant, Greg.
Good evening, my name is Greg Crawford with Florida Engineering Group. With regards to your question, the total parking when we get finished with is going to be 1,571. That's for employees, service, inventory, all of it.
And the accessible parking is how many? Accessible parking for people with disabilities?
Yes, we'll have that also as far as to meet the code requirements.
And how many would that be? Do you know a hand?
I don't have that broken out separately on there, but we're talking about, we're getting ready to add, I believe, four new spaces on it, and the site already had additional sites for both the parking on the sales service and the quick lane. I don't have the exact number right now.
My concern is the current, there's some current accessible parking for disabilities that aren't ADA compliant, and I just want to make sure they, this gets corrected or...
Oh, for the existing ones?
Yeah, yes.
All right, we could take a look at that and see...
Yeah, I wish you would. Like the two went right to showroom, there's no excess aisle, there's no accessible aisle between the two of them.
We can, we can look at that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Any further questions?
I have a question. Jean, some time ago, it was reported that the applicant wanted to improve its, its service department because of their expanding business, which is good. Does this have anything to do with that?
It does, yeah. Yeah, we're actually, the large building that's going in, right here in the middle here, that is actually going to be a combination parts department, service area, and also the second floor is going to be garage, service, garage parking on that. So they'll have a ramp that you'll be able to go up onto the back there and get into the parking, it's on the second floor. But yeah, the bottom is basically going to be parts, service entrance for the customers, and then the actual service area over on the western, about two-thirds of the property or the building.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I got a question. I mean, this looks fine overall, but the one question I have, was there any comments received from anybody over on Powder Avenue, negative or positive about this project?
I know that we tried to have a public hearing meeting, and we sent out invitations for that and got no response for either emails or any response to show up and talk about the project.
Okay, thank you.
Staff hasn't received any concerns either.
All right, no further questions. I'll bring it back for further discussion or a motion.
Yeah, I can do the motion, Mr. Chairman. I motion to find the proposed amendment to the Mullenax Ford Plan Development consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Development Code and recommend approval of the Mullenax PD Master Plan Amendment based on findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Have a motion by Commissioner Doomey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number three, Kelly Park Crossing Change of Zoning and Master Plan, Kelly Park VB Development LLC owners, applicant Kimberly Horn and associate's care of Melby S. Thomas, P.E., southwest corner of State Road 429 and Kelly Park Road.
Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the change of zoning for Kelly Park Crossings from T Transitional to KPI MU, Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use, assignment of interchange, employment, village center, and transition overlay districts and its accompanying master plan. Subject properties are located on the southwest corner of State Road 429 and Kelly Park Road and within the one-mile radius of the interchange of Wakava Parkway and Kelly Park Road, which means it's subject to the KPI Form Based Code. Properties currently have a future land use designation of mixed use. Properties are also currently zoned T Transitional as, as mentioned. The proposed KPI MU zoning for Kelly Park Crossings is compatible with the intent of the city's KPI Form Based Code and the comprehensive plan. The applicant is requesting approval of its accompanying master plan as well. The applicant is proposing that the location of four overlay districts vary slightly from the overlap map in the code as shown in the master plan. And based on the KPI Form Based Code, the boundaries of the overlay districts are not defined and conceptual. The master plan also shows approximate access points and connections, however, finite details of specific uses, site layouts, and access points will be provided at the time of major development plan. Minor revisions of the character zone boundaries are defined in the Form Based Codes as those where boundary line is shifted by less than 300 feet and/or expansion of a character, character overlay zone by less than five acres. The master plan details a conceptual plan for a mix of commercial, industrial, and residential uses. The DRC recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from T Transitional to KPI MU, Kelly Park Interchange Form Based, Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use, assignment of the interchange, employment, village center, and transition overlay districts, the master plan, as well as the minimum and maximum floor area ratio allowances in the KPI Form Based Code, as well as based on the findings and facts presented in staff reports and exhibits. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of staff?
Yes, I do. Excuse me. Is there any plans for an access to Golden Gem Road?
I'll go ahead and, because this is conceptual, I know there've been some background discussion with our transportation coordinator as well, so I'll go ahead and let the applicant talk about access points at this point.
Hello, good evening. My name is Melby Thomas from Kimberly Horn. Oh, lovely. We haven't worked out exactly where the access will be, but yes, the intent is to have access to Golden Gem and also to connect Sadler through the property to the 429 underpass.
Well, I have a problem with Golden Gem Road and the condition it's in right now. I think everybody would agree it's a substandard road. There, there you go, Pam.
Hi, Pam Richmond. Golden Gem is not our road.
I know, but yeah, but it should be our road. We've got, we've got city property on both sides of the road. Why, why don't we not check the...
In certain places. It's a certain kind of road. It's not a 50% road where, once we annex more than 50%, we take the road. Now, I will tell you, I've had conversations with the county, and it is our intent to take the road at some time, but the county needs to make improvements that are to the area that's south of the Form Based Code area because it's in terrible condition, and I don't want to inherit a road that immediately I've got to drop a million dollars into. That's not fair to us. We're fixing the piece on the north, they can fix the piece on the south, and then we'll take the road. I understand what you're saying, but there are limits to the money that we have.
But we get the impact fees, impact fees.
I can't use impact fees to resurface roads. I can only do capacity projects. I don't make the rules that the Florida statute does.
I know, but it's a substandard, it's not, it's not a safe road. It's not. I mean, I've been out there, I've measured it.
It doesn't have anything to do with whether or not it's a state road if I can use impact fee money for it.
So you can't annex our...
Florida statute says that there, there's a list of things that you can use transportation impact fee money for, and resurfacing is not one of them. They all have to be tied in some way to capacity. Signals, widening, striping. You can use impact fee money if you're doing an enhancement or capacity project, you can include the stormwater, you can do sidewalks, you can do trails, but you can't do resurfacing. I'm, I'm talking with the county.
Who paid for, who paid for Lester Road when Lester Road got put in? Who paid for that?
I don't know, that's before me. We might have paid for part of it, and the county paid part of it. Are you talking about when they built it?
Yeah, when they built, yeah.
I'm a five-year, I'm with you, I haven't been here much longer. I don't know.
So you, you were here last, when you were here last April, you stated that the county was going to resurface the road. You made, you made that statement, Orange County's going to resurface Golden Gem Road.
They are, they're going to resurface, they're part of Golden Gem.
Right, does that mean they're going to widen it too, or just resurface it?
They're just going to resurface it. They've got it, I'm waiting from them, I've been asking for at least six months, asking them where that is in their resurfacing program, because they were going to advance it.
The road is 19 feet wide, you know, the fire truck is 10 feet wide, it doesn't fit on that road. And I know the chief police had some issues with it, Chief McKinley had issues with it, and that we seemed to address it, or no one seemed to care.
Commissioner Ryan, I'd just like to add a couple of comments. Jonathan Hules with the Lowndes Law Firm, part of the project team. So this is at the beginning of the journey for this project, and it starts with this rezoning where we're going to assign the various character areas consistent with the Kelly Park mixed-use zoning overlay and its Form Based Code. But as part of that, and what's traveling in conjunction with this request is the development agreement for the overall project, and that is right now under review by staff, Jean and Michael, and Pam, most importantly, maybe. And as part of that, that will be traveling to city council along with this request, so they'll be considered together. And as part of the development agreement, we are dedicating 30 feet of the frontage along Golden Gem, that to the city for the future widening. Now, I know it doesn't address the existing condition of the road, but there is effort being made for the future outlook of that road and the future widening, and maybe one day when the city is prepared to take over and, when it's ready to bring it in, or if it at least will have additional right-of-way along this segment for the county to potentially improve in the future.
I just don't think there should be any more houses built out there accessing Golden Gem Road until they can bring it up to standards.
And that, that is something that will be looked at as the journey progresses. I mean, once we get past this map stage and go to, towards the actual development plan stage, which will also go through a similar review of coming before city council and you're, you're, you all. So, you know, obviously, you, you can monitor the progress of, of what's going to happen with that road as, as this area generally turns over.
Because it's not a safe, it's not a safe road. They don't even have the speed limit, the speed limit's not even posted when you're heading south on it. It looks like a 45 mile an hour road, but actually it's 30 miles an hour, but you wouldn't know it because of the speed limit sign there. We talked about that back in April to him, and you said that would get fixed.
And I asked the county to put, like, I asked them to put speed limit signs.
You said you'd fix it.
I wish they worked for me, they have lots of money. If they worked for me, we'd have a few other things done, but they don't work for me. So I will reach out to them again about just getting the speed limit signs on there, and I'll try and find the date when they're going to resurface. But I, I can't with a clear conscience take a road that's in that bad a shape without some improvements done.
But even resurfacing is not, it's not going to be wide enough, it's still going to be a substandard road.
It's, I understand what you're saying, but I don't have the resources to do it right now. I'd rather work with the county and, because they want to give us the road, get them to make the improvements south of the KPI area, and then we'll take the road. I just, I, I don't think that's fair to the constituency that I serve to make them fix Orange County roads. Not, not this one where there's not enough traffic down at the south end. Most of the traffic's going to be at the north and stay at the north. It's, and you're talking about a lot of money.
I mean, trucks aren't even allowed to go on the north end of the road.
Yeah, unfortunately, they do.
How do you expect school buses, fire trucks, cement trucks to go on that road? How do you expect that?
I, I will talk to Orange County about at least getting it resurfaced, see if they can add a couple feet of, of pavement when they do that. We've done that before.
That would help a lot.
And at the minimum, get the speed limit signs posted.
Thank you, Pam.
I have a question. The resurfacing or the potential widening, I think you answered the question about a minute ago. So it will start at Kelly Park and continue south towards Pont Can, but not all the way to Pont Can?
Well, the, the part that, from this development and some of the other developments in the area, essentially what we're going to end up with on the, almost the northern half of the road, you know, right from the center north to Kelly Park, is a three-lane segment. And then south of that, wherever we stop, that's where I need Orange County to come in. The developers are fixing the north part of the road where we think most of the traffic. Once we get Sadler cut through, there's not going to be a lot of reason for people to go south on the road. There'll be some traffic, don't get me wrong, there'll be some traffic, but not the heavy traffic. But yes, that southern piece that, that the county needs to step up and do what they're supposed to do.
Okay, that, you just led into Sadler. Is Sadler going to terminate that 429 or continue over to Plymouth Sorrento?
No, it's, yeah, the, it's amazing how all the pieces fell into place, from Plymouth Sorrento Road to Golden Gem, there, at the 429, there's a, an overpass or an underpass where the road will fit right through there. We have almost all the right-of-way to make that connection, and we also have almost all the right-of-way to make the connection further to the west where the, the piece of Sadler starts. So in a few years, you'll be able to go from 441 all the way to Plymouth Sorrento on Sadler We need another east-west connection there. I have to do that Kelly Park thing.
So we approved some other developments that are coming out of Dirt Town off of Plymouth Sorrento. So will Sadler be sneaking in between these other projects that we approved?
At Plymouth Sorrento, at where Sadler's going to connect, there is a development on the north side of the road that I think they've seen, right? And then there's a development on the south side, but not right up against Plymouth Sorrento. That's the one little piece on the south that I still need. Yeah, can you, Jean, can you point at that with the...
It's right through here.
Yeah. Yeah, right there, not that, yeah, right there, that, go down, right here.
Is that Joey McQuarly?
This is, this is the, this is the piece right here that I need, a sliver, I need about 30 feet right there.
I see.
And then I, then I'm good to go from just west of Golden Gem all the way over to Plymouth Sorrento.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Richmond, for not stiffing the taxpayers of Apopka with the road improvements. Thank you.
I'm going to do it at other places.
All right, thank you. Does, does anyone here from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a discussion and a motion, please. I need a motion, please.
I can do it.
Commissioner Doomey?
I recommend the motion to find the proposed Kelly Park crossings, change of zoning and master plan consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of proposed change of zoning from T Transitional to KPI MU, Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use, assignment of the interchange, employment, village center, and transition overlay districts and master plan, and the minimum and maximum floor area ratio allowances in the KPI Form Based Code based on the facts and findings presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Thank you, Commissioner Doomey. The motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lando. Everyone in favor, say aye.
We have a discussion time, don't we have a discussion after we make the motion? Okay, would you have further discussion? I just, I just want to make a statement that there's nothing more important than safety, and that's a substandard road, and they want to increase the traffic substantially there, and I think they should fix the road. And I think they should fix the road first before they, before they start increasing traffic.
Well, that's the, the same slippery slope that we get with, uh, number one, the, the applicant is not necessary incumbent upon him to improve the roads. Now, there'll be a portion that they'll be responsible for, but if we, it, it, it goes, like I said, the slippery slope with the school board, we don't have school capacity. Well, the applicant owns a piece of property and we can't hold them hostage because Orange County or us don't improve the roads or the roads are substandard. So again, if you owned a piece of property, you wanna develop it, and then you come before the board and we go, well, wait, the roads aren't good enough there, well, whose fault is that? You know, they're paying taxes on the property, they're paying for the roads. Orange County is non-responsive or we're non-responsive or our roads are substandard. That's really not the fault of the applicant. And it really would be unfair to say we're gonna stop him from doing that because our roads aren't ready for it. It's the same thing with the school. If we, if we never, if we waited until we had sufficient capacity at each school to do a development, we'll never do a development. So, you know, I, I understand your point and, and I, I agree with everything you say. And maybe that's something we can bring up under, you know, new business at the end of the meeting and discuss further with Pam. But I, I don't think that's really something coming upon the developer to, to be responsible for that or be held hostage by the condition of our roads.
Commissioner Ryan, I, I actually agree with you, I'm concerned about the road as well. But I understand this is just the, the general idea of the right to be able to develop it. This isn't actually a planned development, this isn't saying we're gonna put certain neighborhoods there. And just as a, a Apopka taxpayer, I'd really like to see the county do what they can to fix the road prior to the city of Apopka taking possession of it. I hope it gets fixed.
And, and I agree. But again, you know, we're, we're discussing approving this for the applicant. And is it relevant that what the roads are when we get to the master plan? Yeah, then the roads, and I think it even says in there that, that this is just a temporary until they have the master plan.
Right, exactly.
In front of us. But again, my point is, and I, I, I agree with every single thing you said about the condition of their road, I've seen it myself. However, this is a decision that we're going to make for these people to develop a property. And we can't necessarily hold them hostage because the roads aren't ready for, for what they wanna do. I, I don't think that's fair to them. Again, if you owned the property and wanted to develop it, then you were stopped because the roads were insufficient.
Well, the problem is, Orange County has no incentive to improve that road. So we're asking them to improve the road and then give it to us. I just think we gotta just take it as is and improve it. And besides that, there's nothing more important than safety. That's all I'm with.
I disagree.
All right, you can take your vote. Any more discussion? Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Doomey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Ms. Sanchez, please tell the city council that it did not pass unanimously.
I'm sorry?
Tell the city, don't, tell the city the motion passed, but it wasn't unanimous.
Uh, we will, yes, sir, we, we will include it in our staff report.
Okay, thank you. Item number four, small-scale future land use amendment, Simmons property. Owners Chester Leon Simmons and Deborah Simmons, applicant Chester Leon Simmons. Location is eight twenty-eight South Washington Avenue.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the future land use amendment for Simmons property from commercial to residential medium. The property is located at eight twenty-eight South Washington Avenue, approximately point five six acre in size. Proposed future land use designation of residential medium is compatible with the parcels located northwest of the subject property. It's also currently within the M U D mixed-use downtown zoning district, which is compatible with the requested future land use designation. The D R C recommends approval and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of amending the future land use map designation from commercial to residential medium. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone here, um, from the public that wishes to speak on this matter? All right, does anyone have a question, staff or the applicant? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back for discussion. Any discussion? All right, need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I find the proposed change in future land use form commercial, zero point two five floor area ratio to residential medium, ten dwelling units per acre, consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, recommending approval of the future land use amendment based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
I have a motion by Commissioner Washington, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Number five, small-scale future land use amendment for two three zero nine Okoye Apopka Road. Request to approve future land use amendment to our county rural to mixed use fifteen units per acre. Owners Ronnie B. Phillips and Wanda R. Phillips, applicant Jonathan Hules. Location is two three zero nine Okoye Apopka Road.
Again, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the future land use amendment for two three zero nine Okoye Apopka Road from county rural to mixed use. Property is located east of Okoye Apopka Road and north of Keene Road, approximately five point seven acres in size. The proposed future land use designation of mixed use is compatible with the parcels with same designation in the vicinity of this property. The applicant intends to construct a mixed-use development including commercial and residential uses. The D R C recommends approval and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of amending the future land use designation from county rural to mixed use. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this matter? Does anyone have questions of staff or the applicant?
No, sir.
What's gonna be, I'm sorry, I have a question.
Commissioner Doomey?
What's gonna be to the north of that, because that's a flag lot, correct? And what's gonna be to the north of that?
Uh, the applicant, um, intends to assemble that with the parcels just west of it for mixed-use development.
So that'll be both parcels in them, so it'll be everything west of the road there?
Yep.
So we won't, so that, the, the effect of that would be that it would no longer be a flag development? It would be consistent from the road?
Correct.
To the property line on the east side, okay, that's.
Yep, it'll, it'll certainly correct that issue, yes.
That's much better, great.
Yep.
Thank you. Any more questions? All right, bring it back for discussion and a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we find the proposed change in future land use from county rural to mixed use consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, recommending approval of the future land use amendment based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
I have a motion by Commissioner Orlando, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Doomey. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, comprehensive, comprehensive plan, small-scale future land use amendment, eighteen twenty-nine Plymouth Sorrento Road. Owners Kathy Emuli Jung and Amy Chong Yuna. Applicant Mary L. Carter and Associates, care of Emily Brown. The location is southeast corner of Lester Road and Plymouth Sorrento Road.
For the record, this is Roxanne Reed with the City of Apopka. The request is to recommend approval of the future land use map amendment from agriculture to commercial for eighteen twenty-nine Plymouth Sorrento Road. This location, as you can see here on the map, is at the southeast corner of Lester Road and Plymouth Sorrento Road and the acreage is five point eight six acres. The proposed future land use designation of commercial is compatible with the area because properties, um, with the future land use designation of commercial are directly north of this property. And this application is being processed simultaneously with an application to rezone the property from ag to community commercial. The D R C has recommended approval of the change in future land use from agricultural to commercial. And the recommended motion is to find the proposed change in future land use to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the land development code. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Do there any questions of staff or the applicant?
Yes, I do. Didn't we approve a, um, assisted living facility in this area adjacent to this property?
That would probably be before my time, so I'm going to have to refer to Jean if she's.
Uh, not an assisted living facility, but you have great memories, actually a daycare facility.
Daycare, sorry, daycare.
Daycare, it's actually right, uh, west adjacent of Arbor Ridge. So it's very close, just north of this property.
Oh, just north of the property?
So it's south of Lester and north of, north of this property?
Yep, it's this one right here.
Okay. Oh, I see, thank you. So that, oh, so given that, and there's still a little notch or corner, uh, truly at the intersection of Lester and Plymouth Sorrento Road. There's a nursery there, I believe. So then, then next over you have the, um, childcare. And then further down, then you have this project. Am I saying, saying it correctly?
You are, um, and, and just based, I know Jim Hitt's not here tonight, but just based on what staff has discussed in the background along this corridor, um, it's actually kind of trending towards slow intensity commercial uses down here. So C C commercial uses, um, it looks like that's why it's trending down there.
I'm good, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any further questions? Thank you, Ms. Reed, Ms. Sanchez. Is there anyone from the public here which to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for further discussion and a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I find a proposed change in the land use from agriculture, one dwelling unit per five acres to commercial, zero point two five floor area ratio maximum, consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code incompatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the land, future land use amendment based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Thank you, Commissioner Washington, and motion by Commissioner Washington, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven is the same piece of property for a change of zoning for eighteen twenty-nine Plymouth Sorrento Road. Owners Kathy Emuli Jung and Amy Chong Yuna. Mary L. Carter and Associates, care of Emily Brown, applicant, southeast corner of Lester Road and Plymouth Sorrento.
This is Roxanne Reed with the Community Development Department. And this request is to recommend approval of the change of zoning from agriculture to C C, which is the community commercial district. And this district is compatible with the surrounding area due to the, uh, C C zoning districts in, in the area that you can see on the map here. Development Review Committee has recommended approval of the change of zoning from ag to C C based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and in the exhibits. And the recommended motion is to find that this change of zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the land development code. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Assuming we don't have any questions of staff or applicant. Thinking that, we'll bring it back to the board for further discussion or a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we find the proposed eighteen twenty-nine Plymouth Sorrento Road change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning from A G ag, excuse me, district to C C community commercial district based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Thank you, Commissioner Orlando. I have a motion by Commissioner Orlando, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Doomey. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item eight, small-scale future land use Poncan Road property. Owners Poncan Road Property LLC, applicant Kimberly Horn and Associates, care of Jamie Albino P E. Location is southwest corner of Poncan Road and Plymouth Sorrento Road.
This is Roxanne Reed with the Community Development Department. The request is approval of the future land use map amendment from residential low suburban to commercial for the property on Poncan Road. This location, as you can see, is the southwest corner of Poncan Road and Plymouth Sorrento Road. Tract size is approximately fourteen point ninety-five acres. The proposed future land use designation of commercial is compatible with the area as the properties with the future land use designation of commercial are east of the subject properties. And this application is also being processed simultaneously with an application to rezone the property from transitional to, to, and ag to community commercial. The D R C has recommended approval of the change in the future land use from residential low suburban to commercial. And the recommended motion is to find the proposed change in future land use to be compatible with the comprehensive plan and land development code as noted in the findings and facts presented in the staff report and the exhibits. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Anyone have questions of staff?
I had a question, based on the previous, uh, the one we just talked about, a little further south on Plymouth Sorrento Road. You said it was trending commercial, did you say to the south or to the north of the area? Because this is north of the previous area, correct? And, and so is the whole corridor trending commercial? Is it just around the four twenty-nine interchanges? I'm, I'm curious.
This map is showing just here at the intersection, um, you know, of Plymouth Sorrento and Poncan Road. I'm not sure if that is in a, a different, um, nodal area, um, but I can definitely look into that.
Maybe, Jean, do you have any, Ms. Sanchez, do you have any comment on that?
I would agree with your statement, um, Commissioner Doomey. Um, what we'd find is closer to Lester and Plymouth Sorrento, it's definitely proposing. I mean, there are already existing commercial uses on there that P D for the daycare and, for example, that was a commercial P D already. It was just changed to a based, a commercial base zoning district. So there, there are little spots along the corridor of Plymouth Sorrento Road that are already commercial. I, I wouldn't say they're high intensity, intensity commercial uses, more like neighborhood and, and, and slower intensity commercial uses.
Do we have any comments from nearby landowners on this one?
Well, we'll do that, we'll, your public comment.
Okay, okay.
Did you have a, did we have a, a public meeting on this or just send out notices?
Yes, sir, they were required to do a community meeting. Um, and I, we do retrieve, uh, community meeting materials and there were no comments from the community meeting that we saw. Staff didn't receive any comments either, so.
Thank you. All right. Do we have anyone from the public here which speak on this matter? Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Jim Riffle, twenty-five thirty-six West Poncan Road, Apopka three two seven one two. I live nearby. Um, I wonder what the intended use is. What is the appropriate commercial use for this area? I, I hear that the area is trending commercial. Not if you drive down Plymouth Sorrento. I, I hear that the area is trending commercial, not if you drive down Plymouth Sorento Road or Poncan Road. There is a little bit of commercial at Lester now. They've got a public storage facility there, and I expect there's some other things coming in soon. But there are two other corners, I think, here that are probably going to go quickly after this one, and I wonder, again, what's appropriate? What can we expect? Is the applicant present?
The applicant can, go ahead and finish what you have to say, and then if you have questions, the applicant, will you have him come up and rebut?
I have said all I need.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
James Albino, South One Eighty-Nine Orange Avenue, Orlando, Florida, three-two-eight-zero-one. As far as the proposed uses, there's nothing confirmed at this moment. The owner is interested in doing uses such as schools, trade schools, high schools, and I think universities are also approved under zoning district. I know there is some interest on possibly doing a gas station at the corner lot that would require a special exception and brought before the city council, and those are kind of the main uses we've discussed right now. There is nothing set in stone.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
So if they're, we're just approving the, the change, but we're not approving the project here, so they would have to come back.
Future land use.
They would have to come back and propose a project, and that would be a time where we would be able to say whether we thought that was a good...
Correct. And then that would be a specifics as to what was going to be developed on that property. And, and, Mr. Riffle, I understand your concerns, and it's, uh, just as we're discussing traffic, the traffic on that road's improving and, and more and more traffic, and so the corners are going to become more and more valuable, and it's, I don't think it's, I think it's inevitable that we have commercial on one side of it. It's going to probably, those corners will probably at some point in time turn into that, and I understand that's not desirable for you, but I think that's kind of when a road like that, a main thoroughfare is what it's turning into now with all the development around here, so that's probably what's in the pipeline, but we will have more information when we get further on our process. Thank you, sir. All right. Any discussion? Okay. Bring it back for a motion. Guys, we need a motion. Somebody has to make a motion for or against.
Mr. Chairman, I find a proposed change in future land use from residential low suburban, zero dash two dwelling units per acre to commercial, zero point two five floor area ratio maximum, consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the future land use amendment based on findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits. And I might add that, Mr.,
Riffle.
I live right down the street from you. I know what you're talking about.
Thank you, Commissioner Washington. You have a motion by Commissioner Washington? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. Any further discussion? Bring it for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, change of zoning from transitional and agriculture district to community commercial district, Poncan Road property. Poncan Road Property LLC is the owner, applicant Kimberly Horn and Associates, care of Jamie Albino PE. Location southwest corner of Poncan Road and Plymouth Sorento.
Roxanne Reed with the Community Development Department, and this request is to recommend approval of the change of zoning from transitional and ag to CC, which is the community commercial district. This is, the community commercial district is compatible with the surrounding area due to the CC zoning district found east of the subject property, and the applicant does intend to assemble the properties for commercial development. The Development Review Committee finds that the proposed Poncan Road property change of zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning from T transitional and ag agriculture district to CC community commercial district based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and the exhibits, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Any questions of staff or the applicant? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Jim Riffle again. Mr. Chairman, I am not opposed to change or progress. I've just lived in this neck of the woods for nearly seventy years, and I've seen good and bad, and I hope when you guys look at this project, I don't understand how a school might be appropriate, maybe a trade school perhaps, but it's going to be a commercial, it's going to be a gas station, maybe it's going to be a Pizza Hut or something like that. Not opposed to any of those, but sooner or later, somebody's going to ask you to change the use on all the other corners, and I think, gosh, we need to be real careful about what we approve, what, what we might want to use. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riffle. All right. Bring it back to the board for further discussion or a motion.
Yeah, I just want to say something. You know, Mr. Riffle, thank you for coming and talking about that. That's obviously something that we hold, many of us, I think, believe, hold dear to our hearts on, but it's really tough to deny this, this change whenever the other properties nearby have received that change, because I don't think it'd be fair to the property owners of the new one. And it's just, there's a lot of, you know, in economics, we always joke about having two hands, and one hand on the other hand, right? It's, it's really tough, and I would just want you to know I feel for your situation, and thank you for coming tonight.
I'm in pretty darn good shape, so no worries about this. I know you guys have had some, you know, very impactful statements and, and considerations to make. The stuff that's commercial now on Poncan, on the south side of Poncan, at Plymouth Sorento, was rezoned commercial a number of years ago because publics and Baskin Robbins and I think Fifth Third Bank were coming in. That was their plan. Kelly Park changed everything. They're now a, a, a good bit further north, so I don't know of any intended use. I know the landowners of all those properties that are commercial. Trending commercial? Again, I only see a little bit. I know it's coming. Thank you. Sorry to take up so much of your time.
Thank you, Ms. Riffle. Any further discussion? Any comments? Great. Bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I find the proposed Poncan Road property change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning from T transitional and AG agriculture district to CC community commercial district based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Thank you, Commissioner Orlando. Have a motion by Commissioner Orlando. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. On to item nine, change of zoning from transitional, oh, wait a minute, sorry, you got the wrong one, site plan. All right. Site plan. Subject is Alterna Logistics Park, major development plan, from owners of Apopka Industrial Airport South LLC, care of Daniel T. O'Keefe. Applicant is Kimberly Horn and Associates, care of Jason A. Lewis PE. Location is west of four forty-one and Apopka Airport Road.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approval of the Alterna Logistics Park major development plan. It is located west of US four forty-one and Apopka Airport Road, almost seventy-three acres in size. Based on the area, the property is south adjacent of the airport and surrounded by industrial uses. The Alterna Logistics Park major development plan proposes the development of an industrial center with three buildings for warehouse and distribution uses, as well as trailer parking on approximately seventy-two acres. Building one hundred, the building nearest Apopka Airport Road, will have approximately one hundred and fifty-four thousand square feet of area. Building two hundred will have three hundred thousand square feet, and building three hundred will have one hundred and twenty thousand square feet of area for a total of five hundred and seventy, seventy-four thousand square feet of industrial uses. While two hundred and eighty-seven parking spaces are required, the applicant is proposing a total of four hundred and thirty parking spaces with nineteen accessible spaces. The maximum permitted height is fifty feet. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of Alterna Logistics Park major development plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Anyone have a questions of staff or the applicant?
We have a question for the staff. I mean, for the applicant when he, when they're done. For the applicant.
Okay. Is applicant present?
For, yes, applicants in attendance, yes.
Good afternoon, Jason Lewis, Kimberly Horn, as well as Kate Vayner, come in.
Nearby ADA standards, you're supposed to have accessible parking for people with disabilities at all entrances, and it looks like you have them grouped on separate entrances, but the center entrance, which I assume is an entrance on the main building, is, there's no accessible parking there. Building number two hundred.
So the, for that building, the main entrance, whoops, sorry. For that building, the intention is the main entrance for those two, for each corner would be at that northern side of the building.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm talking about like the west entrance and the east center entrance.
Those are emergency exits.
So there's no, okay, so that, it's not an entrance.
To the center of the building, that's correct.
Yeah, but it looks like an entrance the way it's written.
There is a door there, but it's more of an emergency. There is a door there, but it's more of an emergency exit from...
Emergency only. Okay. And same with the other buildings too, I assume?
Correct.
Building one hundred? Okay.
The, and these are spec buildings, so the offices, you know, can move around as they, if they get moved around, we would move the, an ADA space to wherever that office is, but the intention is to try to capture where we, where we, at this point, where we know that office is going to be.
So each entrance will have at least one accessible parking spot for people with disability, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That's what I'm going to clear up. Thank you, sir.
Any further questions to that?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Commissioner Dumey?
If you can answer this, I'd, I'd be really curious to know about a situation like this, where you have a major development plan. What's the economic impact of this, and how many jobs are going to be created? Do we have that kind of information? I mean, you said this is spec building. Is it just going to be something you're going to lease out after it's built?
I don't have that information. The, the, it is currently spec, so.
Well, just for the record, I, I think that would be information, be very helpful in the future, maybe on more projects coming forward like this, because it would be really nice to know that, hey, there's going to be three hundred people working in these warehouses, and the economic, you know, incentives for that, and it's going to create X number of dollars, and I would like to, I'm curious about that.
Absolutely. And the, I mean, you can see we have a decent amount of parking on this. We meet the, the mark, the parking that would typically be needed for this, so it's, if you count parking spaces, there's quite a few parking spaces, and it's, it's not direct correlation to the, the number of employees, but it's pretty close, so.
Well, since it is close to an airport, at least there won't be people complaining about the noise at night, so we'll take that.
Don't take a bet on that. All righty. Any further questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Bring it back to the commission for further discussion and a motion.
Mr. Commission, Chairman, I can do the motion on this one.
Commissioner Dumey?
Item one, recommend a motion is to recommend the approval of the Alterna Logistics Park with the major development plan, subject to the findings inside the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumey. Commissioner Dumey made a motion. Do we need a second, please? Second by Commissioner Orlando. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Site plan number two. You know, I like the fact that I don't have to read the motions anymore, and I think I'm getting paid back by this. I don't know who put this on here for staff, but they're going to get me now, right? Okay. Site plan number two is Apopka Business Center, major development plan. Owners Nancy Mann Trust, seventy point six percent, Will and Carrie Blaine Legacy Blessing Trust, ten point five percent, Bill and Dabney Blaine Chartered Remainder Trust, ten point five percent, Waterstone Support Foundation Inc., eight point four percent, Langman Engineering Environmental Service, care of Joseph Yatzi PE. Oh, that's the, I went right into the applicant. There we go. Got it done. Location southwest corner of Herman Smith Road and General Electric Road.
Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the Apopka Business Center major development plan. The property is located in the southwest corner of Herman Smith Road and General Electric Road, almost seventy-nine acres in size. Based on the area of the property, is currently west of the site of the Amazon Warehouse and surrounded by industrial uses or centers. The Apopka Business Center is located on the southwest corner of Herman Smith Road and GE Road. The major development plan proposes the development of an industrial center with three buildings for warehouse and distribution uses with trailer parking and approximately seventy-nine acres. Warehouse buildings one hundred and two hundred adjacent to Herman Smith Road will have approximately two hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred square feet of area. Warehouse three hundred is proposed to have four hundred and forty-three thousand one hundred square feet for warehouse and distribution uses. While one hundred and forty-four parking spaces are required, the applicant is proposing a total of five hundred and twenty parking spaces with nineteen accessible spaces. The proposed maximum building height is thirty-eight feet, and the maximum permitted height is forty-five feet in this zoning district. The applicant also details proposed open space and amenity areas that surpass the five percent requirement by code. McKay Lake situated in the center of the project site, and Hermit Lake on the southeastern portion are amenitized with paths surrounding the lake areas. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Apopka Business Center major development plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Anyone have any questions of staff or the applicant?
I have a question for Jean. Jean, it talks about Conrad Road, which is a dirt path. Can you go into that a little bit more? On the, on the diagram, please.
They're not, right, they're not proposing, I'll let Pam go ahead and actually address this, because they're not proposing an access on Conrad.
It's, Conrad Road is dirt further south. It's paved up towards the north. It's in really bad shape. It serves not this development. They have no access there, but it, it deviates off of the, the road right away, because there is road right away there, across the, the southwestern corner of their property. So what they're doing is they're not developing on where that road path is, but they're giving us an easement to allow that alignment to cross their property so that the, the property further south, that obviously you can't see here, still can maintain their same access to their property, and it's kind of hard to see in this, but they have a fence, you know, they've got a whole setup. It would cost them a lot of money to have to get the road into the road right away, so they're being pretty generous about that, allowing the, the easement across their property. Now Conrad Road, the, the property to, to the west of the red box and north, that development's coming in, and they are going to fix the northern end of Conrad Road, but south where it just goes down to that, that last property, it's probably going to stay the same way it is.
On the diagram, can you show me where it is? When the diagram, can you show me where this Conrad Road is, on the previous diagram?
How do I do it? This one?
Yes, that one.
Here?
Where is Conrad?
Here, Conrad Road is, ooh, this is touching, here. You can see the road right of way runs right along, I mean, the actual right of way, but the road runs outside of the right of way down to this, this property. So they've, they've moved their development, I don't know how many feet over.
About 40.
About 40 feet, which is pretty generous.
Is it a city road or a private road?
Conrad Road is not, it's a road, it's public road right of way.
All right, any further questions? Thank you, Ms. Richmond. All right. Anyone here from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for a motion.
I can do it, sir.
Commissioner Dumey?
I feel like I'm doing them all, but, you know, and I'll say that before I do the motion, if we can use the parking space as a proxy, this is going to have some fairly good economic impact, as a parking space, a proxy of the warehouses, I'm sorry, the jobs, and I hope that that's a true statement in a couple of years. So I'll make the motion based on that, recommending, that being my hope, okay? I recommend approval of the Apopka Business Center Major Development Plan, subject to the findings in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumey. Motion by Commissioner Dumey, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aaron, we do not have meeting minutes for approval? All righty. No problem. All right, do we have any old business? Have any new business? Thank you very much. You adjourn.